Good evening. I would like to call the school board meeting for Tuesday, February 18th, for the Des Moines Public Schools to order. It's really good to see all of you tonight. It's so cold out. Ms. Rios, could you take the role?
Yes. Ms. Alonso. Ms. Campos. Mr. Dix.
Here.
Ms. Knox. Ms. Martorano.
Here.
Dr. Mayberry Mace.
Here.
Ms. Norris.
Here.
We have Quorum.
Is Ms. Alonso online?
She has opted out. She's not feeling well. So, we have Quorum. The first item of business is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda?
Martorano, so moved.
Dix, second.
We have a motion by Ms. Martorano and a second by Mr. Dix. Is there any discussion or does anyone have any questions? I just want to make a kind of a friendly amendment or note. We are going to pass Policy 218, which is within the consent agenda, but I've asked Dr. Roberts to provide an update at the next board meeting. If that works for you, Dr. Roberts.
Yes, that works.
Yeah, so, just so people are aware. It's the PSYAC. It's the board policy on PSYAC. Okay, any other discussion, questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The agenda is approved. Six to zero. Next on the agenda is the public forum. Do we have any readers of the public forum tonight? Or is that...
Good evening. We provide speakers at the forum an opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes regarding items that are not on the board agenda, and up to five minutes for an agenda item. If anyone wishes to speak during any portion of the business meeting, please email rosa.rios@dmschools.org. The same speaking protocols apply to all individuals who wish to address the board. Speakers will be called on individually, and we will ask that you state your name and address prior to providing comments. Students and minors do not have to provide their addresses. Guests of the board are encouraged to speak to matters relating to programs, services, and operations of Des Moines Public Schools. Please remember that Iowa law prohibits us from discussing specific employees or their job performance. We ask all speakers to avoid references to personalities or character attacks, as those types of comments do not contribute to the purpose for which this public forum exists. The use of inappropriate language will not be tolerated, and individuals choosing to do so will be gavelled out of order and asked to excuse themselves from the premises or escorted out by district security. As a reminder to the board and public, the board will not engage in discussion with public forum speakers, as it is our obligation to discuss only matters that are posted in the public agenda for the sake of transparency and opportunity afforded to all community stakeholders. Matters requiring attention will receive appropriate staff and/or board follow-up at a time after the meeting. Thank you all for your participation. We appreciate your feedback and input.
Ms. Rios, do we have any speakers?
Yes, we do. First up, I'll call RJ Miller. Next speaker is Lyle Crone.
Good evening. Lyle Crone, 3006 East Cutler in Des Moines. Good evening, Board of Directors and Superintendent Dr. Roberts. My name is Lyle Crone. I also have Sharon Bell, our Vice President, in the back. I am honored to serve as the at-large representative for AFSMI Local 2048, and also a school bus driver here in the district. AFSMI Local 2048 represents those in transportation, food service, custodial, security, and logistics. I'm reaching out to formally introduce myself and express my commitment to fostering a stronger and more collaborative relationship between the board, superintendent, and our union. I want to strongly emphasize that our union is not the problem. However, we are a vital part of the solution. We are dedicated professionals who care deeply about the success of this organization and student outcomes. We want to be active participants in sharing its future. However, to do that effectively, we need more engagement, open dialogue, transparency, and a seat at the table when discussions or decisions that impact our respective departments are being made. I firmly believe that by working together, we can address challenges more effectively and create an environment that benefits students, employees, and the organization as a whole. I would welcome the opportunity to discuss how we can increase collaboration and ensure that our voices of our members are heard and valued. With the outrageous attacks on public education and unions, it is time to join forces and move in a positive direction. I appreciate your time this evening, and we are hopeful for your consideration and look forward to working with you in the future.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the speakers. I have signed up.
The next item on our agenda is our district recognitions. Superintendent Roberts, would you please introduce those recognitions?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. As we continue to bring forward recognitions at every school board meeting honoring and recognizing the outstanding accomplishments and actions happening in and out of classrooms by students and adults who serve them, we also find time and take the opportunity to recognize some of our, what I like to describe as stalwart community partners, who are champions of public education, and without them, we will not be able to achieve and accomplish the things that we do. This evening, I am pleased to share with you that we have had an ongoing partnership with our Polk County Board of Supervisors and Prairie Meadows. Each year, I want to, I come to the board with an expression of gratitude, and this year is no different. I want to express sincere gratitude to Julie Stort and our Prairie Meadows team, and Angela Connolly and our Polk County Board of Supervisors for your continued generosity and commitment to not only children in the central Iowa region, but your commitment and support to public education. Your generosity sometimes is measured not only in terms of your finances, but your commitment to time and thought leadership, and we thank you for that. This year, your financial contribution of more than $569,000 will help us to enhance educational opportunities, support our educators, invest in the future of our schools, and make a meaningful difference in the lives of 30,826 brilliant scholars who knock on our doors every day, depending not only on us, but on generous, committed, and dedicated partners like you, when I ask that you come forth and be recognized.
Thank you, Board and Dr. Roberts. This is one of my favorite things to do, obviously, as I serve on the board. Our partnership with Prairie Meadows has been for decades, and we are pleased to be able to provide this money for Des Moines Public Schools. More than ever, with everything going on, you need it. We're happy to do it. And all the support that we can give you, as you say, not only financially, but anything that we can do to help Des Moines Public Schools. We are here for you, no matter what. And as you move forward in your strategy and your re-imagine Des Moines, we're happy that to move forward to help your students. And when you say reimagine, the world is your oyster. So, I'm so excited for what can happen for our Des Moines Public Schools. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for recognizing us tonight. I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to recognize Brian Orokel. He will be our president and CEO starting January 1st of 2026. So, on behalf of Prairie Meadows and Polk County, we're happy to present that this year, we're giving back to Polk County students $1.3 million. And since we've started this partnership with Polk County, we've given back more than $20 million to Polk County students. So, we can't think of a better investment is investing in the future and investing in our kids. So, thank you for recognizing us tonight.
Thank you. You got a caption for the moment?
Amanda, where do you...
Sure.
Maybe she wants to sit here.
Where do you want us to go?
Back in the circle.
What do you think?
You tell us.
Okay.
You're the pro.
How about you in the front here?
Sure.
Is that right?
Yep.
For those of you watching this process, one of the things that was really interesting that I shared was, and the whole board can get in, to see these kids and feel that Prairie Meadows and Polk County is investing in them when they walk on new turf, or they have new uniforms. It's a really big deal for our young people, and so, we're really lucky that we have this partnership. I really appreciate it. It means so much to our young people. So, thank you. Everybody ready? One, two, three. Oh, finger, good, finger.
Thank you.
Good work with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I am too.
Great work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, bye, everybody.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, you're so welcome.
Do we have any other recognitions?
We're going to do that every week, right? Very hopeful. Thank you. Additionally, this evening, I would like to take the opportunity to do somewhat of a general recognition. Last week, many would describe as a hectic but celebratory week in Des Moines Public Schools, with a series of monumental events. The State of the Schools event, which was kicked off by our Team Frostbite, students from North High School, followed by our Board chair. The feedback we've gotten thus far has been nothing short of exemplary and outstanding. But behind the scenes, there are groups of incredible individuals who are doing good work, and so, I want to just say thank you and recognize the members who are part of our superintendent's committee, the Reimagined Education Committee, both our parents, students, staff, certainly our leaders who are part of that committee. Also, I want to recognize individuals who are part of our communications team, Phil Ritter and his team, for doing an outstanding job, for having not only our AV and sound system up, but just, just the presence and atmosphere, certainly outstanding. Last but not least, our leadership and faculty and staff and students at North High School. Thank you for being such gracious hosts. Go Polar Bears. We're looking forward to building on this bigger and better next year. And finally, as we think about recognitions from last week, two days later, we had the Des Moines Public Schools Foundations Event, and I know that that will likely come up later on today in recognitions, but I have to say thank you all to the foundations for, and for the foundations gala. Outstanding event, and we're looking forward to continuing and building on both of those events in future years. Madam Chair, that concludes my recognitions this evening.
Great, thank you. We are now going to move to the consent agenda. As a reminder to the board and public, the board will not engage in discussion or deliberation with a speaker regarding comments made to agenda items. Discussion and deliberation will remain among board members at the board table, with speaker's comments informing the board's discussion, deliberation, and determinations as deemed necessary. Ms. Rios, do we have any speakers?
No speakers.
Ms. Martorano, I believe you have the consent motion.
I move that the board approve the consent items in accordance with the recommended action for each item on the consent agenda, including bills previously authorized, certified, and approved for payment by the board secretary in the amount of $5,262,224.44, and PCAR transactions in the amount of $366,923.79.
Is there a second?
Dix, second.
We have a motion by Ms. Martorano and a second by Mr. Dix. Is there any discussion or does anyone have any questions? Board members, please cast your votes. The vote is approved, six to zero. We will now move on to other business. We have one item, E1 Personnel Recommendation, Receive and File Action. Dr. Roberts, would you like to introduce the matter?
Certainly, Madam Chair. I recommend that the board receive, file, and approve the termination of the contracts for reasons stated forth in the superintendent's notice.
May I have a motion and a second to approve this item?
Martorano, so moved.
Campos, second.
We have a motion by Ms. Martorano and a second by Ms. Campos. Is there any discussion or does anyone have questions? Board members, please cast your vote. The vote is approved, six to zero. Next, we move to items of privilege. This is a quick one. I love it. Who would like to go first?
I can go first. I want to, oh, thank you. All right. I want to give a special acknowledgement and appreciation for the schools that I've had the pleasure of visiting in these first few weeks in February. South Union, Weeks Middle School, and then Morris Elementary. And I see Principal Amos in the audience, so shout out to you. There are some really exciting things happening in our schools, so I would certainly encourage our board and our community and our families to get back into the schools. I mean, it's fun that we have the big events that go on on the weekends and things as well, but the teachers, the frontline, the building leaders, they are really doing some impressive things to make sure that all students feel included and that all students feel like they belong during these critical times. So, I wanted to give a special shout out to those three schools being led by Principal Burke, Principal Amos, and Principal Dr. Johnson. So, thank you.
Thanks. Well, I've just got to get in there and talk about the wonderful hootenanny of the gala. What a great event. I mean, you walk in and you're applauded and cheered by cheerleaders. Abe Lincoln, you had wonderful music. It was just, all around, such great DMPS pride, and it was wonderful to see alumni coming and to listen to the beautiful gospel music. I just, I can't say enough about how wonderful the event was. I'm going to let Ms. Knox actually talk to you about some of the really important outcomes that came out of it, but I just, I want to say thank you to Kaylee, thank you to Jenna. I know there's a huge team behind you, but you have really embraced this and seen this vision, and it's keeping, it's growing and growing. And I just want to say thank you so much for your leadership and all of your hard work. We really appreciate it. We appreciate you. Do you want to tell us? Do you want to give a little drum roll?
Yes, thank you to everyone who attended the Des Moines Public Schools Foundation Dinner on Thursday, the second annual event, and it's sort of like, I guess, having your second child. You're like, I don't know if it's going to be as good as the first one. And then it is! It's even better, you know? So, it was awesome. We raised over 147,000. Is that right, Kaylee?
Good to go.
The generosity in the room was just overwhelming, and the energy. And, Dr. Roberts, thank you for just your comments of inspiration. I received so many kind notes from everyone who was there, who just left feeling energized and believing and motivated and inspired. And so, we're fortunate to have such a generous and engaged community, and looking forward to the third annual event next year, I'm looking at Kaylee. I just want to say thank you so much to Kaylee Becker for her vision and tenacity and hard work, and we are so fortunate to have you on this team. And thank you to the foundation board. And again, I said at the event, we had 100% board attendance, and I really think that, I choked up, actually, speaking about this, because looking around the room at all of you, which you know I feel honored to serve with you all, but I just think that's a testament to our community about how much the school board is in it for the right reasons, and will show up for all of the things, including the foundation. So, thank you all for being there for this event. It meant a lot.
Other items of privilege?
Unfortunately, we had to postpone the CLAP meeting on Saturday due to the weather that never came. But, please stay tuned for a rescheduled date for our Legislative Action Team meeting, where we will be focusing on informing our community as well as legislators about our preschool initiatives at the State House, and in hopes that our legislators vote to properly fund preschool education and public education. So, stay tuned for that. There's also another event this week. If you would like to support our public schools, the Maroon and Gold Gala is Thursday evening, and welcome every, every community member to attend and support our Lincoln High School and feeder pattern.
This is personal privilege, and I promise I'm really going to try not to do this very personal stuff very often, but I can't hold back tonight just because of the night it falls on. I became a dad 16 years ago today, so I have two drivers. You've been warned, public.
Look out!
There are two new drivers on the road, but I'm incredibly proud of my boys, and just, they get to, they get to have a happy birthday from the school board tonight. So, happy birthday, boys.
We're to do a 10-day-attend school, Patrick.
Yeah.
They are sophomores at Roosevelt High School.
Oh, thank you.
And here at Central Campus and Central Academy.
All right, so...
Can be late to school tomorrow morning.
They're already going to be late to school tomorrow.
I'll go last, before Dr. Roberts, but I don't know if you're going to mention this. You probably will, because it seems like every time I mention something, Dr. Roberts mentions it in his little thing. But, I am super excited and so thankful for the district for expanding more preschool transportation. That is something big for our students and our families that have working parents and want to get their kids off to preschool, and I've sent many to preschool, and that's something that's really good for our community. So, I just want to thank the district and appreciate that.
Dr. Roberts, up to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly, in my brief remarks this evening, it's one that, again, is just grunged in so much gratitude for the work that we have embarked upon this year. A journey that every single person on each of our leadership teams understand will take an incredible amount of effort, some of which has been unprecedented, but what is exciting and an incursion is that everyone continues to raise both hands and say, yes, we're in. And so, we're excited about that. And even as I think about our legislative priority, while we are going to continue to partner with the governor and the Department of Education to make this compelling case, that if we are going to achieve strong outcomes for all of our students, not only in the Des Moines Public Schools, but across the state, if we are going to get back to the place of preeminence that Iowa's K-12 public education once had, when we were known as the place to come to see where good quality education was, then we will have to certainly double down on making the right strategic moves and taking the right strategic actions to achieve not only our goals, but the governor and Department of Education's goals of improving literacy. So, we are strongly aligned, with that being a desired outcome. I think where we are going to have to find place to increase our alignment is in how to get there. And there's no doubt in our minds, based on the research that we've looked at, and the current credible and reliable data that says, students who are given opportunities to attend preschool are more than 10 times likely to outperform those who did not. And so, as our legislators on both sides of the aisle are contemplating, reviewing, and looking at a current bill around preschool, we want to continue to encourage them to come back to Des Moines Public Schools, who is in partnership with many other districts across the state, and even some private and parochial schools, that says that investing in preschool is going to be the most worthwhile educational investment we can make as a state. And so, we'll continue to engage in those conversations with our partners in the Hill, with Governor Reynolds, and certainly with Director Snow, because I know that they are truly invested in increasing and advancing literacy. But I want to offer them that we're not going to be able to do that if we do not invest in preschool. Madam Chair, that concludes my comments this evening.
Well said, Dr. Roberts. Thank all of you for coming tonight and being a part of this board meeting. We are going to adjourn at 5, who wants to help me out, 5:4? And, board members, we are not going to take a break. We are going to move straight into our work session to discuss board governance, and it will be time limited, so it will be one hour and no more. So, with that, let's take a moment to switch out, I think Rosie's got some things to, to share with us that we'll discuss. Thanks. No. Is that okay? I just want to power through. So, board members, we had the conversation, was it two weeks ago now, about board governance, and we just got a sense of where, where everybody was as it relates to the current governance model, where we were struggling a little bit, things that we enjoyed, we really liked about our governance model, things we felt needed to be improved. And, and so, I believe that I tasked board leadership to put together a set of next steps. This is a recommendation, and I, I think it's really important just to have a starting point to work from, and then discuss how people feel about it. So, as, as I started to think about what our objective was, both for this meeting and also for how we move forward as a board, with some clear goal on where we're going, I think our goal today is to make sure we have consensus on a structured, strategic approach to board governance in 2025. I'm very intentionally saying 2025, because there are elections at the end of 2025. And so, with that, could be new board colleagues, or it could be the same lot, but that's always an inflection point to reflect on board governance. So, everybody should have this, this one-page handout that starts with objective action plan and timeline. And so, as I thought about how we might use our time today, what we could do is review the actual plan and timeline that I've laid out. There are two small breakout groups. There's actually three questions that I thought we could noodle on in small groups to discuss our thoughts, whether it relates to the monitoring process. It's how board gave feedback on the governance manual, and topics that weren't in the governance manual that we might want to move forward. So, the thinking would be that today, we could accomplish as much as we can, and I think we could probably even do it in 45 minutes, in March, at the next agenda, that we approve the Council of Great City Schools' membership contract. I think we've heard from staff, they really value it, and I think, as Skylar and I were talking, there's probably more ways that the full board can harness and access the learnings from this network of districts that maybe we haven't necessarily tapped into. And then, Kim is our representative, and so, asking Kim to just provide more, she's been great about, you know, plugging conferences, but if there's emails, or action alerts, or things that you're getting, sharing it, so we can learn more about the benefits of being a member to Council of Great City Schools, not just for staff, but also for the board. Then, the thought process would be, in March and April, what I think we all walked away from was, we need to talk about our monitoring process. It's just not feeling, we're not there yet. And then, the second thing was, our governance manual is out of date, right? So, we have a document that actually is not aligned with current practice. And so, in thinking about this, I thought March and April could be used to get us to a monitoring process that we think works for both the board and the superintendent, along with, along with Josie, and the team. And then, our goal would be to execute an updated monitoring process at the April 15th board meeting, because we do have, I think, some items for monitoring. At the same time, March and April, we could review the board governance manual, and we could revise that no later than May 1st. I think, you know, I'll share with you, Kim did a great job of kind of showing, like, where are items of consensus, where are items that we need to dig into. And so, we have a strategy to be strategic in, in looking at the board governance manual. At the same time, you know, thinking ahead to, to the future, you know, we have goals and guardrails. I think we're all consistently wanting to keep those. I think there's been some discussion about whether or not we need to add guardrails. And I also think an important conversation will be in May and June with Dr. Roberts on the strategic plan. You know, he's made a commitment to monitoring it on a regular basis. You know, he's made a commitment to monitoring it on a regular basis. And so how does that factor into the whole monitoring conversation and what does that look like? So I think by, by then, Dr. Roberts, you'll have a better sense of the cascading metrics and things like that. So we can, I think our goal is, we've got to make sure that we're all super clear with interims no later than June 30th, so there's a clear plan of action. So I, I kind of push those conversations for, for May and June. And then, you know, thinking about where we are with regards to how many things we're looking to accomplish, what I thought was in November, that might be the time for us to discuss and look around and see if we want to move forward with Council of Great City Schools' board coaching, or if there's a different type of coaching we might want to seek out. But as I thought about all of the things that we have coming up between now and November, it feels very hard for us to feel like we can dedicate a lot of time to potentially a new coach and a new round of, of coaching, which is why I, I put that in November. This is a recommendation. So I, I want to, this is a starting point. Do people have thoughts on the timeline or questions?
No, I feel the timeline's good and strong and it will help us for what we want to accomplish this year.
Thank you. And I will point out, we have an April, a Sunday, April, insert the date, held as a board. So that's a, that'll be a full day of work that we can move, I think, the, the two buckets forward, the monitoring process and the governance manual. Some work can be done outside of it, and then some work could be done during that day to, to, to push that forward. Other questions or thoughts at this point?
I appreciate you putting this together, and I think it's a, a good jumping off point and identifies a lot of the areas that we do need to focus on and areas that have been outstanding for quite some time. One item that Jenna and I have been working on is scheduling a meeting with Josie to discuss monitoring processes, and we have that scheduled for this Friday. So wanted to add that onto the board's radar.
Or just a question, a clarifying question. Are you reflecting the input and feedback of the board, or are you coming to the board with recommendations and suggestions?
This was something that you tasked Jenna and I with doing, and some, we've scheduled some times and they've gotten pushed and, and rescheduled. So it was an initial conversation to discuss what's working, what, where are areas or opportunities for improvement, to bring current board feedback that we had up until that point to Josie and team to discuss not only the reports being updated, I don't want to use the word more robust, but to meet the needs of the board at the board table during those monitoring sessions. And then we were going to visit the conversation, once we had the conversation with Josie, visit with the board regarding how could we, as a board, how, as a governing body, make this work for us? So it, it felt like our, it felt, it feels as though we are not being reprimanded at the board table. We're able to ask the questions that we want to ask at the appropriate time. We're getting the answers that give us the information that we need as a board to understand that we are moving in the direction of continuous improvement towards meeting or exceeding these goals and honoring our guardrails.
That sounds great. Yeah.
Is that?
I think that sounds great. Just to reflect, you know, Dr. Roberts, I know you had some thoughts on the monitoring process, and I don't know if those have been shared with Josie, Skylar, you know, like, I was thinking about the data step back, like, just different things that had come up in the, in how a monitoring process might look different. So I just want to say, as long as all the feedback is going to, to the three of you, that sounds great. And if one person wants to add that, add to that group, not necessarily to do the meeting on Friday, then it sounds like we're off to the races.
Yes.
Skylar, do you have interest in that?
This Friday won't work, but I'm happy to contribute.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
So we can include you, Skylar, on future conversations. My, the other observation that I have is if, board members will remember, when we first took a survey that produced the results that we're looking at regarding our board governance manual, and we sat down in a retreat on a Saturday or Sunday morning, I recall, the conversation, I think, and, and helped me remember, I would have to go back to my notes, but where I'm remembering we ended was, it became clear that there was perhaps an opportunity for better understanding of how the policies were initially put into place and an understanding of the why around those policies. So my, my ask and wondering is, how do you envision these edits coming to fruition? Are you thinking a committee will work on these and then bring recommendations back? Or I just worry, at the timeline that we have set for ourselves seems aggressive if there's not a baseline foundational understanding of the policies as they exist currently.
I guess I have two questions. Do you have a recommend, I think people do underst, I mean, I, I felt like at the last meeting, we had this conversation, and people feel like they understand the policies. I think you, this is gonna, this is gonna come out the wrong way, but I think you're wondering, like, do you really understand it, or you think you understand it, right? Because we haven't had SOFG training. And that's come, it's coming out the wrong way. Let me say it again. I think people seem to feel like they understand SOFG in a way that maybe is not the way it usually happens because of the board training that typically members go through. So I think my question is, people seem to think they have a foundational knowledge of student outcomes-focused governance. And so I'm not sure what else we have to do other than to work collaboratively to talk about specific.
So my wondering was more specifically about the, our board policy manual, when we sat down and, and began to discuss those in that retreat. And again, perhaps I'm not recalling accurately, but there was a lot of question around, why was it written like this? Why was it initially created? Kind of some of that historical knowledge and, so not necessarily.
Yeah, history. So we can even kick that off today, if that's okay, if you, you want to address that. Would you be the person to address that? Or?
I can certainly try, yes.
I, I would put it differently. I would say, I think we have a foundational understanding of the policies. I think we all also understand that we could have a better understanding of execution of how we do things. And so I think we can recognize both of those things and still feel like, maybe this isn't the way for us. All of those three things can be true at the same time. And so, so I think that may be where, I, I guess I'll just speak for me. That's where I'm coming from. And so, and that's where I would want to see some of the edits that, that we're talking about. But we need governance, and we need to have a manual, and we need to have an agreed-upon structure. And so the idea of looking at some of these things and trying to get through as much as we can, I think your point's well taken. We do all this work and make it last until November, at which time there are four seats open on this board. And so we will start all over again after that i- is done potentially. And so I think getting it done as quickly as possible, as aggressively as possible, so that we can move on to just doing it as best we can, I see the, I see the value in that, so that we're not talking about it.
Or we just remain out of compliance. I mean, really, that's, that's really the question, I think, when I think about where we are right now, is we're out of compliance, we don't use the manual. That would be fine, too. I think, I feel like as a chair, it's, if we're turning this over to, again, it may not be a dramatically different board, or it might be, it feels like we have to have, we should have a, an accurate or accurate enough playbook. So that's really my reason for pushing this forward. Otherwise, I think we have so much to do. If there is not a desire to spend time on this, just say it, because I, I think that's fine, too.
And that's, my question was just more around how you envisioned the process, if it was going to be committee work, bringing back recommendations, or if it was going to be whole board work. So the, the question was framed around, when we sat down initially to discuss this, it really kind of spider-webed into many different conversations, as I recall. So that was, that was the.
This is how I was going to approach it. What I was going to do, and if you look at the agenda for today, small breakout groups, question two, we were actually going to, you know, find a buddy, basically, and look at the tier-one issues that were elevated, and there would be small group conversation, and then bringing it back to a full group conversation. That's how I intended to do it. This was really a warm-up to then determine the work product that would have to come out of this would be making, you know, edits, written edits. I'm open to other suggestions that people have. And again, maybe I want to frame the first question, which is, I think there's agreement that we want to improve the monitoring process. And it looks like Kim and Jenna, and now Skylar and Josie, and with Dr. Roberts, there's a path forward to get to that, and I think to get to that in the timeframe that we're seeking. Do we want to go through the same exercise with the governance manual, or do we want to continue the way we are until November?
Kim, can I ask a question? And I, I just would be interested in your thoughts on this. Can we continue out of compliance and work on holding each other accountable to stay in our lane, so to speak, with these as a, a general guideline with our, with our board policies as they, as they stand as a general guideline? And just have good, honest conversations and some healthy conflict when it calls for it, if we're out of step? Is that, I mean, like, for the, and, and again, I'm looking at the timeframe and just sort of thinking, with the amount of things we have to do, I'm asking, is this the work that we want to engage in right now versus maybe finding our footing through some just healthy work, and then in November, getting back to a governance, an edit, a good edit of the governance manual? That's, that would be an alternative I'd propose.
Board members, other thoughts? Ms. Knox?
Not my area of expertise, but the board.
Jackie, I would recommend moving forward as proposed with the small groups. I, I think there's value in doing some small groups and then coming back together collectively. And if we recognize themes, then I think it gets to Kim's point of, how do we move forward with that? Does that, do those decisions then become recommendations as a larger group, or is there a separate committee that maybe addresses even maybe each of the themes?
Yeah, I think it really, I think this is about capacity and ability to handle what's in front of us in the next few months, right? And so there's nothing wrong with starting, right? And so Ms. Martirano, I wonder if you'd be willing to kick off and give some context to the manual itself? And then if there's interest, we could look at the back of the, the page, which is in tier order. These were the issues that board members said they wanted to address. And so if it's tier one, those four topics were the topics that people wanted to discuss the most. So we could use a little bit of our time today to just do those small breakouts, look at it, read it, have a conversation about it, and see where we are. So I say we just jump in then. So Ms. Martirano, do you want to provide some context? And specifically, just so everybody knows, Kim is going to be talking about, this, this is the foundational document. It's also found at our website. Yeah.
I, I feel ill-prepared to provide an overview of that document in any level of detail. Outside of, the last time it was updated was by committee recommendation to the full board in 2021, 2022.
What did you, maybe I misunderstood. I thought you wanted to provide context to the document.
Or history.
Did I misunderstand that, history and context?
No, I think, I, I was referencing a lot of the questions that came up as we started to go through the individual policies in our previous retreat and work session, and was addressing that a lot of those questions that I, there's nothing that I would like to address at this time. I'm certainly happy to answer questions if I have answers to them as they come up.
So Jackie, if I would offer, maybe we do break out into the smaller groups. There's four, for tier one, there are four areas. There are seven of us. Maybe we split in half and each does two.
You two decide. You're both talking.
Do two and then do two again, so that we have, we don't just have a one-on-one conversation. We can do a four and three.
Yes, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Sorry, there's only six of us here. Never mind. Three and three.
Skylar, what do we do?
Yeah, so if we split, us, us three can address the top two, you three do the bottom two, and come up with maybe some, some themes, some concerns, some recommendations at a very high level, not that they're necessarily going to be implemented, but for discussion.
Okay. So the assignment, just to say again, is that we're going to read, so I'm going to use tier one, 4.1, because that's what we were just assigned, right? Which is, we're going to look at 4.1, we're gonna, we're gonna read it, and we are going to discuss where it's, it's not necessarily, what questions we have, what context we need, where we're struggling, and bring that back to the group conversation.
Yes, yeah. So the anchoring, so you'll have 4.1 and 3.1, and the anchoring question, because on this list, someone ideally in your group put modified for a reason. Why was modified chosen?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, great.
And we're taking 3.3 and 3.6.
I don't know, it would, I mean, you were the, it would make more sense. I don't know, it would, me, you were the, it would make more sense.
And then it should be comprehensive, you know. The guy.
Interesting that and. To. Find all the different policies and.
District policies or board policies?
Well, there seems to be, and I'll let Dr. Roberts speak to this maybe, but a gap. Remember how there were all of the management limitations? And those management limitations were shifted. But it's unclear where they're reflected in.
I don't, I don't know that.
I don't know with the sunsetting of management limitations if they were ever written as district policy when we transition from management limitations to. Guardrails, it is not my belief that any of them were written or codified in district policy that I am aware of.
Thank you, Kim. I would say that the existing team probably pulled bits and pieces. So a piecemeal would be one we have described in it, but we're hopeful because we have a team right now that is working on sort of creating a hub where we can actually easily access policies, board policies, admin regulations, department guidelines, and a myriad of other sort of categorizations of the guidance and policies that will support the work. So we were getting that done now since the sunsetting of those.
So. What would be an example? So. Goals and guardrails would be board policies.
Correct.
Do we have other board policies?
This manual that we're reviewing right now is our board policies. Every other policy is district policy.
But if it's not reflected in district policy, like when something left here and went to, let's just say to the superintendent's district policy, there are some things that. Aren't maybe board directives that, and I think one of the examples was the collective bargaining that was in management, like.
What we tell the staff.
There's certain things that are. Are they board policy? Are they district policy? Are they like you pass them from school board member to school board member? Because like that would be an example of something that would have been in management limitations, telling the superintendent permissible topics or things. I'm just picking on that one. There's a few others. So how, I'm just trying to figure out how to, how to reconcile some of these things.
Yeah, when the management limitation was sunsetted, it was recommended that that become district policy. I don't think that it was, again, I don't think it was codified as such.
Okay, so it sounds like a healthy review of district policies. I mean, the team's doing it anyways to then figure out if there's certain things that got lost that need to be reflected.
So I have a question then. Did the pieces that did not get codified in district policy, but were prior board policy, are those going to be brought to the board for review to say, do you still want these? So it's up to the district to decide whether they're going to adopt them or not. So I'll just go to collective bargaining because that's what we're talking about. So really it will be up to the superintendent to decide what they bargain on or not. He does not have to bring that to the board. There's no more of the board oversight into that. I mean, I'm just.
You're, you're speaking in very high level. Like we, we would still vote to approve the DMEA contract. We would still.
Right, right, right. But all those things that were directed by the board, if they're no longer in our governance manual, then that will be up to the superintendent and his team to determine whether they want to adopt them in a district policy or not continue.
Yeah, I think we need to dive into some of that stuff.
It'd be good just to know where that boundary perhaps existed before and what the decision was, just so we're all on the same page. Because I do feel like oftentimes people are saying, oh, this is at the directive of the board or, you know, and I don't feel like we really went down deeply because I, what I remember when we went through this governance manual was everything will be codified in district policy. Everything that was in management limitations is going to go into district policy. Not that it was going away, but that it was moving into district policy. So I guess I'm trying to understand if it's, if it's going away. I just want to make sure we're transparent.
Yeah.
If things are going away, why they're going away, and who's making the decision. So it does not come back that the board eliminated this, but that the board decided it was not going to be something that we held our superintendent to, and he made that decision. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So I'm also hearing that there's an ask for us to have a very clear delineation or distinction between board policy, governance policy versus superintendent and team admin regulation.
Yeah, I'm really struggling right now on the difference. I have to be honest because. Yeah, I mean, I just, so district policy, who directs district policy? Doesn't the board?
Superintendent.
So does the board approve district policy or do you approve district policy?
We just had.
Yeah, we just had.
We approve them, but we do not monitor them for compliance. We do not, they are not a part of, you know.
We don't monitor them for compliance? That's kind of crazy as a board. Well, let's, I want to stay true to time that I committed. What? Maybe a good next step is trying to work with Josie and Kayla, since they've been doing a lot of the work anyways of like trying to piece things together, to just explain what's where, or like help us understand what's guiding. Like what, what is currently codified as a policy?
There are hundreds and hundreds of.
Where would we find them?
There's a what? On dm schools.org.
They're all there?
Yes. Yeah, there are hundreds and hundreds of them, and most of them are operational policies at a high level. So it is typically not the role of the board. It is the role of the, it is part of the superintendent's role, not the role of the board to oversee those.
I, I'm not disagreeing, but I'm actually wondering, where are they all? Are you saying they're all?
Yes.
Everything that, that governs, everything that superintendent has to abide by is listed on our website under district policies.
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
I mean, they're there.
So that's where we should look.
Well. Except for the fact that in board policy, the superintendent also has to abide by, as the only employee that we monitor, also has to abide by our policies or the ones that pertain to him.
Yeah, I'm trying to think through the best way to keep forward movement, and I'm wondering if, yeah, go ahead, Skylar.
Sorry, are we, I don't know, maybe we jumped ahead. Are you talking about 4.1 right now, or is this just?
No, I think it was just a question about where are the policies? I mean, and a good example was when I asked, I think Skylar, you asked me, what does the board approve as it relates to financials?
Yeah.
And I have that question. Where is that written? How do we know what we're getting and what we're not getting and what governs that? So I think there's just maybe a greater understanding of kind of like department policy versus district policy versus.
You'd almost have a crossover there because in that, in that very good example, it is, it governs what the board does and should and shouldn't be doing, but it also is an operational thing that has to then be carried forward. You'd have to have.
For the superintendent to bring forward to the board and the board review approves.
Yeah.
And so would that be reflected in district policy?
It is.
Or in the?
It is.
And should be in board policy.
And should be in board policy.
There's no need to have it.
Well, it should, if this is what we do, then it, this should reflect what we do. Dr. Roberts understands what he does. If he's doing what he's supposed to do, if we're doing what we're supposed to do, both people come together. But it should be written down both places.
Skylar, you gonna save us here?
I don't know if I'm gonna save you, but I, I think I would need to see an example. The hypotheticals are hard for me to kind of process right now.
The, the website is dm schools.org/departments/administration/policies-and-procedures. And there are series, 800 of them.
Yeah, I think the question is, I think we all know where they are. It's whether or not the management limitations and kind of what happened to that quite specific body of work and where that went.
And I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I don't mean to make this more frustrating than it is to some of us, but I, I just want to, because I don't know that history. There was a piece of board policy that was chunked out and given to as, as operational, it moved to operational. Was that, is that what I'm hearing?
The board. The board updated their board governance policy manual. As a part of that update, there were some red lines. Those red lines were discussed in length and the conversation was if the district and the district leadership wanted to and felt that these were still important and wanted to write district policy around the, these items, then we, as a board, said, yes, go forth and do that.
Okay.
And if they didn't want to. And if they didn't want to?
Then that, those policies are no longer.
All right. Well, I mean, I think now we kind of know what to look for. Jen, I think shared the management limitations just so people could understand what it, what the old model used to be. The policies are on the website and we'll just try and, there, there are some questions, right? So the, the question about approval limits. So, and if that's on the website, great. I don't think it is, right? So I think it's just helpful exercise for us to try and figure out where are the big gaps? So there's clarity and especially if there's something that really needs to be rectified that we don't even realize it's not codified somewhere.
And I think a lot of that is the work that Josie
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there may not have been bad intent. It may just not have ever made it over because somebody just didn't do it, you know?
And that did happen in between
Matt, yeah.
A, a previous superintendent and a, an interim superintendent and
And new DMEA, transitioning DMEA leadership too, I felt like wasn't, didn't Josh transition, maybe not.
No.
Yeah. So anyways.
So the team and I will continue to again work to sort of find, create a clear space where we can look at, find and distinguish between board policy versus admin regulations, admin guidelines, department regulations, department guidelines. And if there are gaps that exist based on the board's observation and there is an ask that the board has, whether or not something should be superintendent and team's responsibility or board policy, then I think we bring that to the table, have a discussion, and I think it's easily resolvable. Yeah.
When I was helping Kaylee, I, what I did was like connect the board policy, board governance policy to administrative policy. So everything the board, the superintendent has falls under 3.3, which is delegation to superintendent, along with superintendent uses, you know, reasonable interpretation than superintendent has.
Okay, thank you.
Another example, the solvency ratio would be another example. And I don't know if that might, I don't think that made it in, but that's another, I just got on 2.6. And we've heard about that a lot, that that's a board policy and we're like, where is that? So like, that's another example of ones that we've heard a lot about.
Yep. So we're going to end this meeting. I think that what, if everybody could just write down their learnings from the conversation, I have a feeling that this, this, the starting point is still this tension between student outcomes and student outcomes plus other responsibilities of a board and broader oversight. And, and I'm not sure having that conversation tonight is actually going to move us in the right direction. So I wonder if the better use of time is for everybody to kind of keep their notes, think about the conversation. And then Skylar, you and I can try and look for more time to advance this part of the conversation because the monitoring conversation is moving forward, right? So there's a group that's already, so if somebody has a very specific idea on where to go next, otherwise I'm just going to look for a free hour the next time we think we can squeeze in a work session to be able to talk about it to keep advancing the conversation. If, if indeed the board wants to continue moving in this direction.
Because I think we can make improvements. I feel like we got one where we're pretty close to a good recommendation for a reasonable improvement. And that, that meets the, I think the, the concerns of the folks who said maybe edit. And so little by little could work.
You're the optimist. Way to go, Patrick.
I'm, I'm working on it.
Okay. Final comments on this process or ways to approach it better, different, more effectively?
Yeah, my wondering would just be if this should be a, an ad hoc committee that brings, that discusses these items and brings forth recommendations. I think that the amount of time that can be spent in a, in a committee can be much greater than what the whole board can commit to. And I think that seeing your timeline here, that would be a way to try and meet some of these deadlines that you've identified.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to, I'm happy to be on the governance manual policy since you're on monitoring. I mean, I, we, I'm happy to do it that way if other people want to join that committee and be a part of it.
Yeah, I, I think that'd be appropriate and probably the best solution for moving forward to actually get something concrete. What I would ask from that committee and, because if it's you and Kim or whoever it is, is that that committee is taking the feedback from the entire board and implementing that.
If we have it, we don't have every, unfortunately, we don't have everybody's feedback.
Right.
So
But we're gathering, we're, or at least we're supposed to be gathering it.
So we could revisit this same survey that we took previously and ask everyone to resubmit their feedback. If you want me to create a new survey, I can so that we can compare the previously, the previous results from the survey to the new results and then take in account all of the feedback.
How about we just focus on the first tier?
Okay.
Let's just start.
So survey the first tier, all board members provide feedback on the first tier.
I just think maybe we chunk it out that way.
Yep. So I'm going to forward the redlined version that we had from back in 2022. And the reason I say that is because like, I don't think solvency ratio was anything we were thinking about when we did this. I mean, I think there's things that have bubbled up over time that now that you're looking back, you're like, oh, that needs to be somewhere. And I, and I think that could be really helpful for everyone just to see what was eliminated, to just really think through now that we've been here for a while and had to, you know, lead with a new superintendent and then kind of figure out all of these pieces that were sort of institutional knowledge, what needs to be somewhere, right?
And so just to, just use that example, would a solvency ratio be a guardrail as opposed to a, like, I, I, I think I'm struggling to understand that is something that the board should be able to direct the superintendent to adhere to certain financial health standards, right? And so how, how, how does that happen?
If you have an operational excellence guardrail and a policy that says this is what operational excellence looks like in our solvency ratio, you use the policy as a reason to say to the superintendent, this is our ask of you.
An interim guardrail perhaps?
But
I don't know. I would, I would
I'd put, I'd put that on policy.
I, I think a committee would be great to figure that out.
Okay, I'm on the committee. Who else is on the committee?
Me.
I'll join.
Thank you. Okay. We are going to wrap up this work session. Just kind of a quick announcement. A couple of us have elevated to Dr. Roberts and to Matt wanting a clearer understanding of timeline and next steps and how all of the pieces are flowing together. And Dr. Roberts said he would present that either at the next board meeting or in writing before.
That's correct.
Is that right? Yeah. Okay. Perfect. Team? Happy birthday to the twins. Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night.